Call the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, mid-month meeting to order. Good to see everyone. Commissioner Stephen Alves is back in the bag, back in the bag. A little chilly, but we are here. Mr. Brown has immediately been properly advertised.
Yes, sir.
I see Mr. down here over in the corner. All right, let us stand. We'll ask Mr. Mosley if he will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious and God, Father, we thank you for all that you do for us on a daily basis. We thank you for the sunshine as well as the rain. And now, Father God, we ask for your divine wisdom and insight tonight as they deliberate on the business of this community. We pray that you be with them and strengthen them. These and all the other blessings we ask in Jesus the Christ's name we pray. And everybody said?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move right on with departmental reports, LCPC.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Hello.
Chairman. So, I'm here to present some amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. You should have in your packet a cover sheet that kind of overviews the amendments and then the actual ordinance which details the language that we're proposing to have in the UDO. And I'm just going to cover over, just kind of quickly go through the overview. And you can stop me along the way if you want any clarification or if there's anything you want, have questions about that's in the actual ordinance itself. So, we have, the first thing we did is we have an amendment to add in a new use into the UDO for residential commercial use. This allows a combination of, as the name implies, residential and commercial uses with limitations within either the same building or in separate buildings on the same property. We have included which districts they are allowed in and then have additional provisions in those limitations spelled out. The next change we have is for parking of RVs outside of RV parks. This is actually in some language that was in the Liberty County zoning ordinance that got omitted accidentally. And so, the Building and Licensing Department has asked us to put it back in. And it basically doesn't allow RVs to be parked outside of an RV park on, in a front yard. It allows it on private property, side yard or the rear. But it also does not allow anybody to live in that, use that RV for living purposes, if it's not in an RV park. And then, the remainder of the amendments are kind of technical changes to the site plan and some of the subdivision requirements. Number three there on the overview is amending Section 402-2 where we have increased the threshold when a lighting photometric plan is required. Currently, that threshold is 12, kind of giving a break to those smaller parking lots. We're upping that to 20. So, only the larger parking lots will require that extra bit of engineering to provide that lighting plan. And then, we have also added in a section requiring commercial properties to maintain their parking lots. They've got to keep it free of litter and make sure the weeds are, are no weeds and their landscaping is kept nicely. The fourth amendment is to Section 504- I'm sorry, 503-4. And we are just adding a certification block. Oops, I'm sorry, I forgot I have control over this. Oh, certification. Not coming in too well. Certifica- there we go, thank you. The certification block there, we're adding for the planning commissioner's signature on final plats. And then, our next amendment is to Section 503-8, which involves the maintenance bonds that we get when a subdivision is coming in for final plat approval. As you may recall, we get usually two performance bonds for the unfinished work, which is usually paving and sidewalks and street trees. And then, we get a maintenance bond that's good for two years. Now, the problem is that we, not the problem, but the issue is that when we get, sometimes the work on the streets or the sidewalks don't get done in a timely manner, in which case then, your two-year maintenance bond, you're not getting a full two-years maintenance warranty on those items if they're not constructed within a certain amount of time. They could get, you know, sometimes this paving doesn't get done for six months or more. Or the sidewalks in front of the house lots don't get put in until eight months after the houses are built. So, we want to make sure that you get your full two years of maintenance on those items that are not finished at the time of final plat approval. We amended Section 504-5, which is the water provisions, to align with the Department of Health rules, which say that you require connection to a municipal system if the water is within 1,000 feet of a municipal system. Currently, it's 500 feet. And, and the next one, number seven on your overview, we have an amendment to just to fix a typo that's in the sewer section, but so we're switching out water and sewer. That was, like I said, just a typo.
Marty.
Yes.
The one with about the water, so the Department of Health changed their rules from 502?
I don't know when those rules changed, but when I sent this out to the Department of Health, that's the response I got. Yep. I don't know how long it's been not in agreement with the State or Department of Health rules, but we're now bringing it in.
Mr. Brown, is that in your, is that in your archive somewhere that they?
I mean, I knew it was a state requirement, but, and I knew we had signaled the Health Department. And we know that if anybody comes and applies, they have to be connected to the water. Whether it was actually codified, I think it was in our actual water ordinance.
Yeah.
That we did, in our code book.
Yeah.
It wasn't listed under planning and zoning requirements, it's a separate ordinance in the county commission guide.
But it stated 1,000 feet.
It is.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
What I'm looking at, Marty, is you've got it pretty much down to somebody's house that's torn up during the storm and they want to park an RV there to live in it until they can complete some of the work. Whether it's the owner or whether it's the people working on it. And if they've lived in it, they've probably got water on site, wouldn't you think?
I would think so, yes. They would have to have some kind of water supply, certainly.
I know, but that's why I'm saying, where is the 1,000 feet? I don't understand why you would have, if it's 1,000 foot from any rural system or city system?
Public system. Right, so I don't know, and I don't know, this isn't the subdivision regulation. So, I don't know if this would necessarily apply to a single-family home on its own lot.
Well, I mean, to me, it's a common sense situation, which is if somebody's house is damaged during the storm and they've got to live with an RV, so they ought to be able to still use their water. They may not be able to use their electricity, but they can still use their water on site, right, Jeff? I mean, they've got city water, they've got-
I think there are two different provisions here. One is if you're, if you're proposing the bill within 1,000 feet of the county system, you need to tie into the county system. That's what this says. The other part about the RVs just says that that was something that, that was omitted from the, that's already been in your ordinance for years. And we omitted it when we adopted the UDO. And that just simply says that those, those RVs had to be, had to be parked in the backyard or the side yard. They can't be parked in the front yard. And it also says you can't live in them. You know, they can't be your permanent residents because they're not designed to be a permanent residence. They're designed to be a recreational vehicle.
So, you've got a lot of complaints on it?
We got complaints from the, from your building department that it's not in the ordinance anymore because they were getting complaints about people parking their RVs in the front yard in places where they shouldn't be. And, and they, from time to time, they do get complaints that people are living in RVs and you're not really, you're not, they're not built to be lived in permanently.
Okay, I thought you might have been, you know, somebody's house, they're building it, they're going to live there in it until they get their house built. That's one thing. If you talk about storm damage, then they're going to be able to utilize whatever water system they've got. Shallow well, deep well, or core city well, whatever there is out there in Kentucky County.
Yeah, this wouldn't apply to that.
Just ask us a question first. I'm kind of lost in this.
Yeah, it, it's a lot to take in.
How do you get a RV?
So, you had some questions?
Yes.
Go back, when you mentioned about the subdivision and the roads and the barns.
The, oh, the, the performance bonds?
Performance bonds. Now, this may be the wrong time, but may be the right time to get it inserted. We need to look at, and I mentioned it to Mr. Wong, about increasing the thickness of the asphalt because by the time they get through running up and down on it, it's already cracked. Then the barns, it's about, it's about time to turn it loose.
Right, right. That's in here. So, like, that, yes, yes. So, that's, so, that's coming up under Section 504-7 streets. So, yeah. So, continuing on with the sewer, we've added the, if someone's going to connect to a private sewer system, that, that system has to be able to provide conveyance of the sewer, sewage in addition to the treatment and disposal. They have to be able to get it to where it's going to finally go and be treated. And then, then instead of requiring a variance for the requirement for a community sewer system, the governing authority may waive this requirement. Before, it's variance process and a waiver process are two different things. And the variance process is a, is a higher bar that's really meant to prevent zoning from being a land taking. So, you don't need that in this case. It's a waiver is a much lower bar. It's very specific as to when you would grant that waiver as it relates specifically to community sewer systems. And then, kind of going along with that, it's changes the minimum lot size for subdivisions that have, are allowed to have septic systems to be in line with the Department of Health. They currently have a minimum of a half acre if you're going to have onsite water indoor sewer. And so, we have kind of a dual threshold we're proposing. One is a half acre if you're going to have up to 50 lots. And then, if it's, or you're going to have a subdivision over 50 lots, then you have to have a minimum one acre. Or, if the Department of Health requires more than that based on the soil conditions, then it would be, obviously be the higher amount. But that, right now, those minimums are three acres and five acres, so we're reducing that to half acre and one acre. And then, we are moving the pump station requirements that are in another subsection into this section. So, that was just kind of a clar- So that was just kind of a clerical thing. Now, moving on to the streets, we have updated and revised the, it's going to be really hard to see. So we have, I did talk to Trent about this with your concern. So in, in Liberty County, we are saying that you're increasing the subbase to eight inches and having a two-inch super pave, 12.5 millimeter super pave. I know that's getting kind of technical, but that is what he indicated that you were looking for on local and collector streets.
I was looking for the asphalt to be increased, but still leave the base as what it is.
So the standard is one and a half inches super pave, and maybe Trent can talk to this a little more. So the pavement is one and a half inches thick and six inches in the rest of the county, county, other jurisdictions. But for Liberty County, it's going to be two inches of pavement on top of eight inches of subbase.
Two inches is going to be after row?
At the...
After rows?
That would be asphalt.
Asphalt thickness, correct. Yes. So that would be your minimum standard on local and collector streets. Arterial streets, which tend to have more traffic, would have, be dependent on how much traffic it's going to have. It would be more than that, but there would be an analysis done on, based on the, on the traffic for arterial streets.
And one other thing, I know Mr. Wong is not up you up, but, Mr. Wong, some of these subdivisions, I'd like to start seeing some cobal, boiling to make sure that we're getting our full inches all the way through and through.
There is testing of the subbase and of the asphalt itself when the, when the roads are put in. Mhm. We are adding some pavement and curb markings around hydrants. The, as, I was, last time I was before you, we were, had a bunch of amendments for international fire codes. And one of that was you had to kind of widen the road a little bit around the hydrant. And so now what we're proposing is that that area, we call it a hydrant zone, has, is striped out on the curb and in the little pop-out and on the curb on the other side. So someone's not parking opposite a hydrant either, so you keep a clear path for emergency vehicles to access that hydrant. We have removed the requirement for inlet spacing. Instead, the drainage on the street is going to be governed by the amount of allowable gutter spread, how much the water will fill into the street. And we are requiring that developers, developers purchase and install all street signs. That includes the stop, the speed limits, the pedestrian crossing, the speed humps if they want, if they have those kind of traffic calming measures. And then the last one you don't really have to worry about, but it's in there, is that we're revising the Heinzville gutter spread requirement. And then the last set of amendments is to section 504 dash 12. And that is amending the width of the required easements for utilities and stormwater. And I was trying to keep it simple, and the original adoption of the UDO is like 30 feet for everything, and then that caused some problems for some developers. And so now it's tailored more to what the easement is for, whether it's a swale, whether it's a deep sewer pipe, we've widened and, or narrowed it as necessary. And that's on that sheet there, I know it's really hard to read.
No, we have copies.
Yeah. And that is kind of a quick overview of these changes, amendments. And we are hoping for an April 1st effective date. It's so far, it's past Flemington and Heinzville. The rest of the jurisdiction's coming up.
A question about the required developers to purchase and install all traffic control signs. Those are the signs that are installed at the time of construction? Because I'm thinking about, sometimes you see a sign that says, slow children playing. So those kind of signs will fall as a responsibility of?
Those weren't necessarily contemplated, but, you know, if that's something that the county wants to see, we need to have some kind of guidance as to where you would want them, so like you make sure that they're on the plans, you know, we can make sure they're on the plans.
Yeah.
And they get installed in the places they should be.
Yeah, let's, let's think about that.
Another one, is you mentioned speed bumps. Someone building a new subdivision, will they be allowed to put speed bumps in while it's being constructed? Or will it's something after someone has moved in there for six months and you got 10, 20 families in there and they decided that they want speed bumps?
No, so the current UDO actually has a requirement that they have to consider traffic calming devices, measures to, because a lot of times you do get, if you, if you don't have anything now, all of a sudden the, the people move in and they start complaining that it's a, you know, it's a straightaway, they're, they're zipping around through the cars and whatnot. So we actually have a provision where they have to consider traffic calming. And usually, the option that I've been seeing since the UDO was adopted that had that provision is that they go with speed humps. They're not the, you know what those are, they aren't the short little speed humps, speed bumps, but they're, they're wider. Yeah. Yeah, and those would get installed as part of the paving of the, of the road. So when they pave the road, then they put in those speed humps.
So it's best to put them in while it's being constructed?
Yes.
That all there?
Yep, this is a public hearing, so...
It was a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
It was warranted.
She said, she's...
Yes.
Flemington adopted it last week, and Heinzville adopted it this afternoon. And Midway deferred it to their workshop coming up next Monday.
It's before Walterville next week, and Allenhurst and Gum Branch. And Riceboro's in there somewhere, too.
Yeah. All right. And you said it was a public hearing?
Yes.
Nobody signed, all right.
Okay, and...
She must be the public.
This, this is part of, yeah, I'll do it as public right now. So the number she gave you, really an update from when we did my, from my status report, the eight and two is what we're really looking at. A lot of communities are doing that now. Have gotten several feedback, some feedback from some of the builders and developers in the area as far as timing of when it goes into effect. Now, we have several subdivisions that are already submitted that would fall under the old rule if we use the April 1st deadline. Several of them have several projects that they're working on that are in design phase that they budgeted for certain requirements of six and inch and a half. You know, want you guys maybe consider a later date or a certain date implementation for the eight and two from the six and one and a half, you know, as far out as January 1st, you know, or we can say the end of the July 1st, or give them a little bit of time or something to start making corrections or to be able to get what they have in the works submitted before the eight and two goes into effect. Because it does have a pretty good cost impact on our developers as they go along. And I have a feeling that if we don't do something, we'll, we'll see some waiver requests or variance request in the initial going on, or you may end up with an earful of conversation. So it's just something for you guys to consider. If you're interested in looking at doing that, if not, we can stick with the April 1st date and we can...
How many do you know of that are in the pending line?
Two.
Two? Do you think that's it, or?
Well, that's all I know about.
Yeah.
And they may not come right away, because there's some water and sewer issues with those. So I'm kind of trying to see how that goes.
What would be the problem with holding off 45 days, Mr. Brown?
Or just...
When you said July, I was fine with that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we should go to January, but...
Yeah, say first of July, that way that they have a chance to get it finished and get it submitted.
And this is the first time I saw it, so I'm sure that maybe some other folks have already looked at it. It's not been published in the paper, has it?
It has.
We, we advertise tonight as a public hearing. Anytime you change the zoning in the state of Georgia, you've got to have a public hearing. So this is, tonight is that, so you, you're free to take as long as you want to, to adopt it, but you just got to have the public hearing.
But I mean, the draft itself, the public, it's not been sent to the newspaper.
Not, not, not verbatim like you heard it tonight.
How about the builders, is it, then?
We did have a group of builders and engineers, the, the county engineer, the city engineer, the Flemington engineer, all of our local engineers have, have reviewed this and vetted it.
So it'd be your suggestion, July 1st, Trent?
Well, yes, sir, July 1st, just on the paving requirements. I think all the other stuff, you can go ahead and, and be active.
Well, the one thing that I was asking about was, you know, you've got some subdivisions that, if they're going to put their signs up and they're going to own those signs, now the county buys the signs and says it's, put them up. But typically, all of our signs in the county are green.
Yes, correct.
So they, if they belong to them, the, the builder, he liable to want blue or purple or pink, and that's what I'm saying, they liable to, this, you know, that's not noted in there, because he's going to install them.
Now, we're talking about road shrines and street signs.
Street signs.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so like your yield and, you know, all your traffic control signs.
Those are all...
I know, but I'm talking about street names.
Street names, yes. We're, we're, all ours are going to be green with white letters.
Yeah, they can't, they can't vary on that.
If they do, then it's, then it is homeowners association
Yeah.
or property owner association, they're not going to be ours.
Right. I hear you.
They, they, you know, they do have to meet this, the county's standards for their street signs.
Could be, could be Easter eggs.
Their street name signs, they have, yeah.
And, and the speed limit signs are standard too, something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
There's the manual of uniform traffic control devices that they'll have to comply with, that's what those signs are. Yeah, and that's indicated in the amendment as well.
Marty, what if one sign gets knocked down in a subdivision, who is going to replace it?
The signs and the, it goes with the owner of the street, so it would be up to Liberty County.
But once that subdivision is turned over to the county?
Yes.
It's the county's responsibility.
Yes.
It's been that way.
Just want to make it clear.
Do you want to come out of the meeting before we... Do you want to come out of the public hearing before we make a vote?
I really didn't, there was a public hearing, but since there's no one who signed up, it's been, it's been open session. Unless we need that for legal...
I think you're fine.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'll make the motion and we go to, drop that dated, July 1st.
Yeah, but what she wanted to do, come back in April, where am I to go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In March.
You want us to...
So I'm, I'm, my understanding is what you're, what you're, would like to do.
Well, let's, well, commissions, are you comfortable with the presentation today? Then if so, I mean, she didn't come to take a vote, but, but we are can?
I'd like to read over it again.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like, then let's, let's go over it, because what we've seen, you know, we're not sure of, and the public, they're watching live streaming, and they may have questions too.
Let's bring it back then, Will.
So let's, let's bring it back.
The next, the...
No, no, we're going, she's going to bring it back in March.
March. And then, and then you can set, you know, the overall adoption of these amendments for April 1st, except for that provision, that the paving can go into effect on July 1st in Liberty County.
All right, ma'am, that'll work.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. Finance?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here this evening to present the county's December 2024 financial statements. And starting with the general fund, at the end of December, we have collected approximately 27% of our budgeted revenues for the year and have spent approximately 45% of the total expenditures. Our target, we're now six months into the fiscal year, so it's about 50% of expenditures. So we are, we're running ahead of schedule. We are spending less than, than on average, I guess, which is a good thing.
It's a good thing.
December, as you know, is, is, is our leanest month of the fiscal year. And we currently have two months of operating expenditures in our unreserved fund balance. But this is up from last December, where we reported less than one month. And looking at the departmental expenditures for the general fund, no big variances that I haven't reported on already this fiscal year, but I will go through those. Some of these departments are, are skewed based on our expectation, just the percent of the fiscal year that, that has passed. And, but many of these will level out as we continue through the fiscal year. And this is a case for IT, general administration, which is our regional dues commissions that we have to pay at the beginning of the fiscal year, superior court, and the bureaus of professional and police standards. They have contracts that they renew at the beginning of the fiscal year, so payment is higher in the earlier months than it will be later on. Additionally, we have a couple of departments that are showing unfavorable variances for December purely as a result of the overtime hours that were worked, was worked during Hurricane Helene. This includes our admin, tax assessors, and EMA. Some other significant variances to note is elections. Just due to the timing of the December elections, their expenses were higher for this portion of the fiscal year. But this should level out as we, I said December, it was November elections. This should level out as we continue through the fiscal year. Recreation is increased for temporary employees, they're paying, they're part-time people. But hopefully, this will level out now that they've been able to hire three new full-time positions. For the remaining departments, there's nothing that's really causing any concern. At this point, we fully expect these departments to level out and fall back in line as we continue through the fiscal year. Yes, sir.
With some of these that are in the red?
Uh-huh.
What about reimbursement, coming back, Mr. Moses, Mr. Brown, from the stone?
From FEMA?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I spoke with Bob earlier, actually, and we...
He brought the check.
We're in the hopper. Check's in the mail. So hopefully, I mean, hopefully we can get some of that back this fiscal year. It's definitely not guaranteed, though, for that category B labor.
Well, what's the percentage of hope that we'll get? Fifty-fifty?
Depends on which, which nightly news you want.
Yeah, I know. He said high noon, yeah. So, but that, we wouldn't, we would have lots of company in that regard, though. A lot of folk have expenditures. So I'm hoping as a collective group that will impress upon the piles that be that we need those funds, you know, to replace the funds that are spent. I mean, it's going to hurt a lot of people if we don't get those funds.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Do we need to write somebody, do we need to...
We've got everything submitted, and a good thing again was we, we were in the hopper very early. You may have seen where they chose not to extend some submission deadlines for hurricane-related items. And that was a kudo for everybody in the county getting their stuff in, cities and county getting their stuff in early.
So we don't know, they have not started sending out reimbursements at all to any...
Which is not unusual. I mean, la, last time it took us the better part of a year to be able to get back a significant amount. Hopefully, it'll come quicker than that, Bob, because I had some indication that it might.
What was it, like 60% reimbursement, or it's not a full reimbursement?
It was actually, and Bob can address that, it's, it's, yeah.
You don't have the check.
Who takes an hour of you?
Right now, we did all of our paperwork, and we're going to fall into that category where we're going to be 100% for category A, which is our debris, and our category B, which is our emergency personnel. And then the rest of it will be a 75-25. So we had four, I think it was four buildings. We used two generators and then our feed plan. That right there is going to be a 75-25, but as far as the debris and the emergency personnel is going to be 100%. Hopefully, I talked to Jima today. Hopefully, we'll get a check probably next week for expedited project with, that we did on the debris. And it's going to be, I think it was 1.4 million, so we can start paying those bills for the debris.
All right, thank you.
Turning the page to solid waste. At the end of December, this fund is showing a net loss for the year, 679,000. We've collected about 33% of our total budgeted revenues and have spent 44% of our budgeted expenditures. However, I can tell you, being in February right now, we have collected over 500,000 in our assessments. So this net loss does turn around as we, as we get through more months of the fiscal year. There's currently one department in solid waste that's showing over budget for the month. And this is the, goodness, I forgot. This is for unexpected vehicle and site repairs. This is Department of, the solid waste collections department, excuse me, 45-20. Um, this is department of, uh, the solid waste collections department, excuse me, forty-five, twenty. Um, on the next page, uh, this is our special revenue funds, and there's a slight variance, uh, showing for the DA victim witness. And this is also for, uh, unexpected, uh, vehicle repair. But all of the remaining special revenue funds are currently operating within their budgets, um, at this point in the fiscal year. Now on to our sales tax reports. Um, our revenue for the sales tax seven for December, we collected one point two million. Um, this is one of the best months we've had so far.
Keep saying that, keep saying that.
Yes, sir, one point two million for the month. Since this loss began, we have received over twenty-two point five million in proceeds, and have spent about half of that, twelve point four million in expenditures. Uh, for T-SLOSS, um, also one of our highest collection months this December, uh, receiving one point one million in revenue.
See, bothered to take lessons from you, talking about checks coming in.
That's right. We'll take all that we can get. Um, the total that we have collected for T-SLOSS is forty-eight point seven million, and we have spent twenty-two point seven on our, uh, approved T-SLOSS projects. And this concludes my December report, unless, uh, you have any additional questions?
You remind me, um, T-SLOSS, what did we, what was our expected, projected, was that the sixty-something?
Yes, it was. It, in, in fact, it was a, yes, a large projection, sixty, I wanna say sixty-nine million dollars.
That sounds right, yes, sir.
So we on a good?
Yes.
Good track, okay. Yes, sir, just a second. Um, I know tax bills went out late, late, late in the week.
December twentieth, they went out.
How, how's the, um, income coming in, how's it?
Uh, we, we got some, I'll, I'll just say a little bit, uh, in January, I guess those early payers. Um, but the, the, we received much, much more, uh, in our February payment. Um, and that's, uh, those big mortgage, mortgage companies for the people, uh, paying out of escrow,
Mm-hmm.
Um, were received and processed downstairs, and, and so January, we got, uh, February, we got a great, large payment, yes, sir.
Okay, so we should be on track, um, budgetary wise, even though the bills went out a month late, okay?
They generally, I think last year they went out first part of December, second weekend of December. So, I mean, it's not, wasn't too much variation really in that, but cash flow wise, about the same.
Okay, alright, need to hear it, alright. Any questions for Mr. Samantha, Finance? I'm sorry, Commissioner Gillen.
Yes, sir.
Chris, and on the sales tax seven, uh, road money detail on the footnote, uh, and I did obligate, um, District Five for the construction of drainage projects. And it's also, um, it's on the footnote of, of the T-SLOSS, um, report, this thing, um.
The same obligation, oh my goodness, okay.
So you double obligated?
But I, 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 I wanna help him, but not.
Not extra.
It's a good, it's a good feeling to help him, but don't feel that good.
Yes, sir, I, that is my mistake, and I will, I'll take it off the sales tax.
Okay.
And keep it on the T-SLOSS.
I've, I've been helping you since I've been up there. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hold on, hold on, a second.
The obligation for the, the pavement in Fleming and Joey and the bracket life, is this caught in here, is it?
Uh, it would have been.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's in there.
It's in T-SLOSS.
It's in that T-SLOSS, I see it on.
T-SLOSS, the tick mark number three.
I see it on mine.
Uh, forty-five thousand from each.
Okay, now, but how about for the, uh, I guess it was a regular sales tax for?
Olive Street.
Olive Street project.
I show District Five, two hundred thousand obligation for Olive, Olive Street Sidewalk project.
Right.
I told him I was gonna help him with that, but I ain't gonna help him very much, but I'm gonna help him.
Yeah, you supposed to help Eddie on that one.
Y'all, y'all like brothers.
It says two, yeah, it's, it's there, it's there. It's there.
Did I forget a page?
It's, it's there. It's there.
They might just finish with that project.
Did you save us any money?
It's a long way to me anyway.
Yeah.
What should we save?
For the toll project?
Yeah.
The city's, um, spinning the brunt of it, I believe.
Yes, sir.
I used your question, I skipped it last time. Are we, are municipalities in good standing, are they working out a good deal? Are they gonna pay upfront with interest? For what's due to the county of taxpayers' money?
We have that one city that has not lived up to their verbal contract that, that we, uh,
We're gonna discuss that tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Glad you say your door is always open.
Yes.
Engineering, Mr. Long?
Sorry, what, trying to ignore you there, I was kinda looking back on the agenda.
I didn't feel like doing it, my friend.
Okay, uh, Islands Highway Box Cover, next week, they're going to change sides of the road. Uh, they'll reroute traffic onto a temporary road that's on the top of the, where the box cover, they've been working lately. Um, so that switch will be occurring. Um, we'll be changing the, uh, variable message boards, um, and we have been working with them to make sure they stay up. They go down a good bit, but we do, we are trying to stay on them to make sure that they're there, so. And, um, the lights are definitely working, and those have stayed working, uh, the variable message board is one that I have the most issues with. Um, so they should be doing that and moving on. I sent a, uh, several of you, uh, an updated schedule from them. Um, they have asked for a couple of weeks from the permit issues we've talked about, um, which would take them to the middle of April. Uh, we're kinda look at that and process that, uh, for your, for a meeting sometime in March. Um, so that project ought to be moving along and, and getting finished. Um, and Keith is out there, uh, we have somebody out there every day looking at it and trying to make sure that it's moving like it should. The guys are about to start at West Cemetery Road, um, to get that done. Uh, they're gonna start some clearing and grubbing within the next two weeks or so. Um, the pickleball court, I don't know if y'all have ridden by and seen, but all the concrete's down for the courts themselves. Uh, they finished pouring the last three courts today. Um, they tensioned the three courts that they poured on Monday. So, it's kind of a pretty cool process to watch them get out there and, you know, pull those cables and tie them off and get it all set up, so. Um, you should have, uh, an inspection report that has some pictures of it, it's really kinda neat to watch. Um, so that's really going on, and I invite you anytime to go out and look and see what it looks like. Uh, roadway striping, uh, they came and did a good bit of it, um, they still have to come back and finish. Um, Commissioner Thrift and I talked about several that they had not finished, and, uh, they are on tap. Yes, ma'am, some of them hadn't started, some of them hadn't finished. Um, so they have, uh, we've gone through and we have actually measured every foot of, uh, pavement that they put, not pavement, striping that they put out, to make sure that they're staying in their contract, and, uh, they should be getting through on time. Uh, water system west of the railroad, uh, the contractor's probably gonna start clearing in February twenty-fourth, which is, should be next week sometime. Um, we are doing, uh, going over different, uh, issues as far as their shop drawings and making sure everything's ready. Uh, all their, uh, materials are being ordered, uh, casings for railroad and just all the different things are going on. So, sometimes it doesn't look like anything's going on, but something's really going on in the background.
Grant, on, on that right there, uh, did you say we were gonna move over for those people that didn't wanna comply?
Yes, sir, right now, we're, right now, we're gonna skip around those areas.
Yeah.
Um, I talked to the attorneys, and, uh, they were supposed to have met with the property owners last week, um, to have that process going. And hopefully within the next week or so, when we get to the point that they can actually file the condemnation, uh, then it will be ours and we'll be free to move forward. Um, then all they can do is really argue price at the time. Um, but they, they are working on it, and they are trying to get that pulled together for us.
So the, the stop point is still gonna be?
We have enough to go all the way down eighty-four, so we'll go down eighty-four, uh, just past the bus park. So, and then we got services, uh, crossing the road most of the way down. So, it worked out well. The only, the, a couple of things we had in the plans that we're not gonna do is down Brights Lake Road. Uh, they already have a water system there, uh, so that was not, that was something we could take out pretty easy. And then, once you make the bend on Macintosh Lake Road, uh, everything in the back is already, uh, on a water system. So we stopped, uh, right there, kinda the, where the pavement ends and it turns off to the right. So, that gave us all of what we needed for our features, and, uh, it's gonna work out good. Okay. The villages at Limerick Roadway Repair, uh, they've been out there doing a lot of that. Um, they've, they, they actually, uh, have been generous and done more than what we'd asked them to do on several occasions, and doing a pretty decent job. Um, like I said, we're not fixing everything, we're just fixing the worst spots. Um, they went into six or seven catch basins that, uh, we didn't ask them to, to fix, and, you know, that was, they're, they're doing a good job and treating us well. Um, so, but they're gonna wait and pave it all at the same time, instead of coming and paving little sections. The Middle Park Pavilion is practically done. Um, he has asked for thirty days, uh, additional time. Um, and, you know, he did have some weather delays during the course of the time. And, uh, he also did have some, uh, material delays as far as the fencing that goes around it. So, uh, we feel like the, the thirty days that he was asking for is warranted. Um, we are gonna try to have a final inspection on it, uh, next week. Uh, that way we can come up with any punch list items or anything like that. Uh, we did talk to the building inspections department this morning, and we're gonna do that inspection together, so that we're all out there making sure everything looks right. Now, um, he's got a little bit of grading, uh, like on the gate for the fencing going in, the, the stop wall, there's a piece of it that's not there yet. So, we gotta fix that. They had a, a incorrect faucet on the sink, we gotta fix that. There's several little odds and ends that we're working on trying to fix.
Grant, while you're talking about that, I probably got about ten pitches I need to go with you.
Okay.
That needs to be corrected.
Okay, well, send them on, that way we,
We think about.
We'll add it to our list. Okay, yeah, let, let me know, I'll be glad to take a look at those. Um, but that's actually gonna wrap itself up pretty soon. Um, we're also kinda ramping up on the Jones Creek Pavilion. Uh, we've got all the contracts, uh, signed and executed, and we have a, uh, pre-construction conference set up for next week. Um, don't ask me the day, I know it's on my calendar, I just can't say it right now. Um, and then we, we're gonna set their start date, uh, March fourth, which will be Monday. Um, that way their clock will start. And I did, again, name the Marina on Cattle Hammock the wrong thing. So, I, I knew it, and I, I, I still did it, so, but it's Cattle Hammock Pier. So, we have three layouts for the Upland, and we have three layouts for the Riverside. Uh, we are trying to vet each one of those to make sure that it is, they are permissible. Um, and we're gonna go over with Mr. Brown and Mr. Mosley, uh, make sure that we're all in agreement, and then we're gonna bring you, uh, several options for you to comment on and let us know what you like. And once we do that, then we can get into the permit process for that one. So, uh, be expecting a, a little bit of a meeting to kinda go over what you might like for the Cattle Hammock Pier. Okay, um, other than that, that's the main things I wanna talk about. I had a big section on here for typical pavement section, but we took care of that with the, uh, UDO stuff today, um, so that worked out well. Um, other than that, that's, that's it for me. I mean, nine or ten?
Got nine questions.
Okay.
We need to get together on the Little Park Fire Station, there's some things that I've seen down there. The, like the stop sign coming out to Highway eighty-four, it's been knocked down four times already.
Did we knock it down?
No, I had on my glasses. But the, uh,
The stop sign is getting knocked down?
Stop sign coming out to eighty-four.
Yeah.
We need, I think we need like a high raised pad out there, 'cause when they come up, they don't hit anything but that sign. It's been knocked, it's been replaced, replaced four times by the road department already. We need to do something with that bird pond. Bird pond.
It's gotta be some of us, 'cause we don't have a lot of visitors there.
That's why I asked that question.
You would be surprised, really. You would be surprised, we probably don't go in there and turn around and come back out.
Yeah.
At the fire station?
At the fire station.
Really?
Okay.
Yeah.
It is happening.
Yeah.
We need to work on that bird pond out front, the one that I mentioned.
Okay. I seen a little water thing, is that, it's out in the front and the side, and, uh, what, concrete's that? I seen some birds in that the other day.
Yeah, some birds in there, it should not be there.
They got the, they got the,
Which we didn't pay for that.
The birds has got the,
Well, I'm, I'm trying to get some fish to put in it for you two.
Okay, bring some big, good ones in.
Okay, come on, y'all.
Also, what are we gonna do about Bill Carter Road and the grass, and I've been asking about this for six months now, or better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now what are we going to do?
Yes, sir, um, I've got, um, I got some prices. Uh, one of the guys, the, the, one, one of the guys wanted seventeen thousand dollars to do that. And, um, talked to you about the seventeen thousand, we didn't wanna spend that. Um, we have talked to some other people to get some more prices. Um, right now, everybody's kinda not really wanting to tackle it, because it's, you know, the dirt is kind of dead dirt. Uh, and that's one reason it's not growing very well. Um, we did talk back to the contractor, and they were supposed to get back out there and work on that. Um, unless you and I get out there and let's put our boots on the ground together, and I'll show you what's going on and tell you what we've tried to do on that, that way you kinda know.
Uh, when you wanna do that?
It's up to you, you tell me, first part next week?
Last part.
Just try to do it Monday morning?
No, not Monday morning, no.
Okay, alright, you, you give me call you Monday?
No, I'll be out of town.
Okay.
Let's do it one of those mornings when you coming in, so you won't have to charge us for going back down there.
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay.
So you just, you let me know what day that you, uh, wanna come in, and I'll meet you. Does that come in most of the?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, if you will, hold on, Mr. Dog, if you will, let's make this a teaching moment, when he brought the, um, cattle hammock. When, um, Commissioner Blunt and I were down at the, the last comprehensive planning meeting they had, of course, some of those folk did not have the correct information on how we even came to that project. Will you give us the three-minute version of how we came into that project?
Probably even shorter than that, is that, uh, DNR came to us probably about two, wow, twelve years ago now, and said, we need to be, we got some money, uh, to help do piers and boat ramps and things like that. But we've noticed that there's really not many saltwater access points in Liberty County. They had also looked at Macintosh and some others, and recommended that we take a look at trying to acquire some land for that, so the commission at the time made a decision to do that. Um, one of the, that, that was deep water. One of the only places that was not already engulfed in some kind of planning design was a parcel of land down there. Uh, we did reach out to the property owners at the time and agreed to purchase that. First thought was to put a boat lift in there of some type, which would have had to be a trolley-type system, I think you, you and I may have talked about that. Scrap that idea because of, of not really cost, but length of time that it would take to put that in, uh, and have gone back now to a pure concept to be able to do that. Scrap that idea because of, of not really cost, but length of time that it would take to put that in, uh, and have gone back now to a pure concept to be able to do that.
Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Stevens was there with us too. You know, we talked earlier about this misinformation that's out there, so.
A lot of misinformation.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. I hope they're listening. Mr. Dodd? You gonna give us your prediction, your, your storm prediction for twenty twenty-five while you're up?
Hey, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Hey, tonight, we're just gonna talk about, um, the hazard mitigation plan. So our hazard mitigation plan is good for five years. Every five years, we have to rebid it out to update that, that plan. Our, currently, our plan will run out April of next year. But we backwards plan and it takes anywhere from nine to twelve months to get that. Cause once we go through all the, uh, work sessions to get what we want in that plan, it's gotta go to G M A, then it's gotta go to, uh, F E M A to get approved. So we did a R F P to do it. We had it out for, uh, thirty days. We did it at the beginning of the year. And based off of, we had a lot of questions and a lot of people were inquiring about the, to the rewrite of it. We only had two people come in with a, a, a bid and we opened those bids up on, um, February the second, I believe it was. February the third, and, um, we had two companies, like I said. And based off of the, the team of three people within the, the county, we, we came up with, uh, Wit Company at thirty-three thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred dollars. And we got a grant for that. And the way that works, our match is an income match. So all of our workshops that we have, we invite all the municipalities to that because it's a multi-jurisdiction plan. So all that money goes through our income match. So it's no, it's no cost doll, dollar wise on that for us. Uh, we just get the grant like that. So we recommend that we go with the, the Wit Company.
You know, out of curiosity, is anyone, you, you got the Wit Company at thirty-three and the other company at thirty, you going with the higher one? Obviously, there's some reason.
Yes, sir. Based off, based off of their plans and, and we all agreed, based off of their plans, the, the leadership, the guy that owns, uh, the Wit Company was, uh, um, he, he's the fo- former, uh, F E M A director. So, um, and, and just the put together of the plan, based off their experience and their, their leadership. And, and they was more of an in-person meeting instead of, um, like one of the companies just wanted to do one meeting in person and they wanted to do that virtual and everything else was virtual. And I think we just get more out of it if we do in-person meetings.
Okay.
And they have an office in Georgia and this company is rewriting, uh, Chatham County's.
Are they?
Also.
Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Dodd? If not, Chair entertain a motion. Second, they received the bid from the Wit Company at thirty-three thousand, nine hundred. That's covered with grant funding and in-kind accommodation.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. All right, sir. We follow staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You don't wanna make your storm prediction while you're? What, what are they saying? Maybe give us a preliminary, what are they saying?
Only prediction I can give you that, uh, hazard right now, sir, it's gonna be cold tonight, so. We're looking at, uh, they got, they do have a hazard weather, a freeze warning. Um, it's gonna be about twenty-two with a wind chill around fourteen degrees, so.
Come on tonight?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Pets, plants, and what? Pipes?
Plants, pipes. And, you know, if you're gonna be outside, you know, wear the hats and gloves and drip your, uh, water pipes, cause you're gonna have some freezing tomorrow.
Anything on the hurricane predictions? Is it too early yet for that?
Too early, yes, sir.
All right, sir. We'll have you come back.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
He could predict that. He needs to be working somewhere.
No, no, don't tell him. Don't tell him. Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit, Mr. Trey Scott. Hello, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
It's been a year. Uh, again, my name is Trey Scott. I was the partner who oversaw the audit of the county's twenty twenty-four financial statements and certainly pleased to be here with you all to discuss the results of that audit, just to kinda give you an idea of why I'm here. Uh, give you a quick introduction to Malden and Jenkins in case you're unfamiliar with us. Uh, gonna go over our auditor's report, compliance report, and, uh, a brief kinda look at your financial statements for fiscal year twenty-four, uh, and then some required communications, a few other matters, and then certainly answer any questions that you all may have. Really quickly about Malden and Jenkins, we were founded over a hundred years ago. We serve over seven hundred and twenty-five governmental entities throughout the southeast, do that across, uh, keeps changing, fourteen offices in six states. Uh, the office that serves you all is our Savannah, Georgia office. Uh, but enough about us, I think of particular importance to you all is our audit opinion on your financial statements. I think, as you all know, uh, that big, thick document, that, that act for, uh, is the responsibility of the county's management. Uh, it's our responsibility as your auditor to express opinions on that financial information based on our audit. Uh, and we do that by following generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. Uh, and I'm pleased to report to you all this evening that we were able to issue the county a clean, uh, or what we call an unmodified opinion. Uh, and what that basically means is that your financial statements present fairly the financial position and, and the results of the county's operations as of June thirty, twenty twenty-four. And that's what you're looking for, right? A clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can provide to you. Also, in case you are unaware, you all go above and beyond the minimum required reporting of a local government. You present that act for, that annual comprehensive financial report. It has some additional sections in it, uh, and it's submitted annually in the certificate of achievement for financial reporting. Uh, but that, that's the program that the G F O A, um, has. Uh, and this will be the twenty-second year that the county's received that sought-after certificate. So that's, I think, something you all should be very proud of and certainly, uh, something that the finance department works really hard, uh, for each year and, and certainly something they should be, uh, commended for. Also included in your act for are a couple of compliance reports. The first is our yellow book report. Uh, we don't, uh, provide you with an opinion on your controls. But if we have any findings, this is where we would report those to you. We did have the one, uh, segregation of duties finding again this year related to, uh, just, uh, some of the elected officials' offices. Um, and, and, you know, a lot of times the, the, of the county's size, it's sometimes not financially feasible to have enough folks, but uh, it's just one of those things we have to bring to your attention, obviously, each year. Uh, the other report is our single audit report. Uh, anytime you spend more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in federal grant monies, you're required to have a single audit of your major grant programs. Uh, that major grant program this year was your ARPA coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Uh, we did do the single audit on that, uh, major program, had no findings, uh, and issued you all an unmodified or clean opinion on compliance with that major grant program. So that's a great thing as well. Moving on from our reports, talk a little bit about the numbers. I think I tell you all each year. Uh, the county, like all counties in the state of Georgia, uh, present two sets of financial statements in your act for. Um, you have government-wide financial statements, which take a look at all of your funds, like a big picture view. Uh, all the funds are rolled up into one column, uh, and you can see, you know, kind of that global view of, of the county as of June thirty, twenty twenty-four, as it relates to your finances. The other is your, are your fund-level financial information, what you're more apt to hear it on a monthly basis from, from the CFO, uh, or, or also during the budget process. So what you're looking at, the numbers on this, uh, slide are your government-wide numbers. Again, so all of your funds kinda rolled up together and uh, I'm sure everybody loves just looking at a bunch of numbers on the page. Uh, but, uh, the last two bullets I draw your attention to, the fir-, that fur-, that next-to-last bullet, your net position. So the difference between your assets and your liabilities, not the cash you have, right, was a hundred twenty-nine point one million. And we increased that net position during fiscal year twenty-four by about fifteen point six million. So you brought in about a hundred and five million in revenue and you spent about eighty-nine point two million, uh, in expenses. So good, good, healthy increase to, to the net position again, across all of your funds, uh, for fiscal year twenty-four. One of the more common questions I get is how healthy are we as a county?
Yes, sir.
Uh, an audit's not designed to tell you how healthy you are, but there are certain metrics you can look at, uh, to kinda gauge that health. One of the ones I like to look at at the government-wide level is, are we reinvesting back into the county? Or are we letting our capital base kind of decline and age? Uh, and what this graph shows you is, is continued investment. You wanna see that blue bar continuing to grow. Uh, and you don't, you kinda wanna have a pretty significant difference between, uh, the height of the green bar and, or, excuse me, yeah, the height of the green bar and the height of the blue bar, because that kinda does show uh, that your assets are aging if those two, two bars or those, those two lines in the graph are getting closer to one another. So this graph does show me that the county, especially over the course of the last six years, um, has, has done a pretty good job, or really good job of, of reinvesting in, uh, its capital asset base. If we move on from your government-wide numbers, which you only see one time a year in that act for, to, to the fund-level information, which you're more apt to see, and as I mentioned earlier, and more specifically, your general fund, uh, that third bullet down, fund balance of about twenty-six point two million. Uh, the third bullet from the bottom, we increased fund balance in the general fund for fiscal year twenty-four by about one point four million. So that's good. That's, that's the kinda trend that you wanna see. Uh, and we were talking about health a little while ago. Those bottom two bullets are, are two good indicators of health. How many months of expenditures do you have in fund balance in the general fund? You all are around five months. Uh, G F O A recommends somewhere between three and six. So you're in a good spot there as it relates to your fund balance. Now, you could have a really good-looking, uh, or healthy-looking fund balance and still not be all that healthy. That's why I like to kinda take a look at liquidity. So how many times could you pay your current liabilities with the current assets you have available to you, those liquid assets like cash and current receivables? You all could have paid those, those current liabilities, like your, your invoices that were due at June thirty, uh, your payroll that was due at June thirty, your coming due at June thirty. You could have done that almost seven and a half times. So that's a good, strong, liquid position that you were in at June thirty, twenty twenty-four as well.
How do we get to a ten? Uh, that, a question though, uh, thank you for saying that's good and I appreciate that. I mean, already hats off to Sam and her department. Uh, but we are always conscious about trying to strengthen our financials, um, positions, is that the word?
Sure.
So, so that seven is, is really good. Is that, for, for, for most counties, that's good or well?
I mean, that's, yeah, that means you could have paid what was due at June thirty seven times with the, with the amount of asset, current assets you had. So, yeah, that's very strong. I mean, I would be concerned if it was point five or one or, you know, one and a half or something like that, cause that would tell me that you're really just barely kinda making payroll every month, right? So seven and a half times is pretty strong. Now, that number is gonna decrease for any government that's, that, you know, relies heavily on property taxes. It's gonna decrease all the way from June thirty up until your next property tax cycle.
That's what you live by.
But at June thirty, you know, you, you still are, uh, at a pretty lean point. Um, and so, uh, seven, seven point four, I, I believe it was, is, yeah, certainly a, a good liquid. Good, strong liquid position, sure. I like the pictures better than the numbers. Uh, and this is a really telling graph. I mean, look at the growth over the course of the last seven years. I mean, we were right around thirty million in revenues in the general fund, uh, and right around sixty million in revenues in twenty twenty-four. So twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-four, uh, tremendous growth. And you can see, not just revenues are growing, uh, expenditures are growing as well. So that's why the revenues need to grow. Uh, fund balance, uh, dipped a little bit between twenty-two and twenty-three. And I think that was primarily because of a debt issuance and just some timing there in twenty twenty-two. Uh, but we've brought it back up again in twenty twenty-four a little bit. That slight increase that I mentioned earlier of about one point four million. So, uh, good trends in the general fund. No, no concerns there. Another one of your major or large funds is your business-type activity-type funds is your solid waste fund. Uh, we're still at, reporting a deficit there of about one million. So your asset, or your liabilities exceed your assets there. Uh, you know, we increased that, or excuse me, decreased that deficit. It's an increase to your net position of about a hundred, one hundred thousand this year or during fiscal year twenty-four. So that's good. We need to keep chipping away, uh, at that deficit. Typically, business-type funds should be self-supporting. Uh, so your, your operating revenues should exceed your operating expenses. Uh, and you can kinda see that was the case in, uh, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Uh, but in twenty-one, you know, we kind of started uh, having more expen-, operating expenditures than we had operating revenues. So if there was one thing I would tell you to keep an eye on or try to keep working uh, towards, it would be chipping away at that deficit in your, in your solid waste fund. Moving on from the numbers, uh, just some required communications, things that, that government auditing standards require me to communicate to you all. Uh, your footnotes or your financial statement disclosures, uh, the, the accounting estimates and judgments that are in your financial statements. Those are all very integral parts of the act for and, and are the responsibility of management. Uh, also wanna make sure you're aware, we had no issues, uh, in the performance of our audit, no difficulties in, in dealing with management or disagreements with management. Uh, we work, again, primarily with the finance department, uh, and the CFO, and, and, uh, she does a great job of getting us what we need, uh, when we need it so that we can get, uh, get the audit complete. Uh, and that's certainly very, very refreshing from our standpoint as your auditor. Uh, no uncorrected misstatements. So any adjustments that were proposed have all been posted to the accounts of the county. And then finally, just wanna make sure you all are aware that we're independent of the county in accordance with all of the applicable standards of, of our profession. And then few other matters. I'm, I'm sure you all want me to drone on for the next thirty minutes about these New Gatsby standards that are coming out, that are gonna be applicable over the next, uh, couple of years. No real significant impacts we, that, that we expect, but, uh, we'll definitely work with the finance depart-, department on the, the best course of, of action for implementation of those. And that concludes what I wanted to report to you all this evening. Uh, certainly has always been a pleasure to serve the county and, and we look forward to serving you in the future. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? I don't have a question. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but, um, enjoy, maybe help me with this. Um, Ms. Richardson just gave the financial report for February, December, excuse me, and, and she relayed that our revenues exceeded our expenditures. We don't target, basically, we have a pretty fair fund balance. One of the arguments that we have to deal with from some in the general public is about Liberty County's military rate. Um, and we have been taught that counties compute military rates differently, you know. Uh, we know that. But as our auditor, did anything stand out from your audit report, from your audit review that Liberty County is doing that's uncharacteristic for how a county operates or should operate?
No, sir. As simple as I could, as I could answer it. If I did, i- if we did, you know, we would provide you with a finding or we would have a management letter comment. Any, anywhere we see where we feel like you all could improve controls or, uh, maybe operating differently or inefficiently in, in comparison to maybe other governments, yeah, we would make sure to, to make you aware of that, either through a, through a finding or, or through a management letter comment.
And I didn't pay you to say that.
No, sir.
Kinda like when you pay your truck off or your car off, everything's looking real good. And then the next month, engine goes out. So you gotta be preparing for times. I mean, I was listening on the solid waste, which is a, something that, you know, we've got an issue with.
We're working on that.
I mean, the, the, where it's located. I mean, when has it been upgraded? When, I mean, it's the same building that's there. Somewhere along the line, that's gonna be an expense to work on. I don't know, Trent probably can tell us, uh, but I mean, you've got metal building and you've got everything in the world going in there. So there's gonna be some expense there, which we need to look at. Um, we don't wanna be using out-of-date stuff. And I don't know what's fixing the, right. Uh, is this gonna be the year we pay off the Justice Center?
Um, we will pay off the Justice Center at the end of the sales tax period.
That'll be July?
No, sir. That'll be, uh, twenty-nine.
Twenty?
Twenty-nine.
Okay.
Yeah, this round.
Sound right. We looked at the at the numbers, maybe we were looking at another one. What, we were looking at.
Yeah, yeah, this round.
Four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Hmm. This report hit. Do you have that?
No, no. It's showing what's obligated probably there for, just for the next bond payment.
But we knew that this round of sale tax would clear it up.
Yes, sir. It'll take the total amount that's obligated, or it'll take the total amount that you see allocated on that line in there to, uh, satisfy the bond payments through twenty twenty-nine.
And how?
And I, and it may actually pay off a little bit before twenty twenty-nine.
Thinking maybe a little earlier.
I believe is that.
What is that interest on that, Samantha?
Uh, three point something.
Yeah.
It's in the three.
Can we refinance it?
Well, what, sure. I mean, things like that is, you know, we were trying to decide where we gonna need to, to go back and redo. I mean, it's been in operation for a while, just like some other buildings that we've got, just like this one. I mean.
And we've done some upgrades, uh, and not to labor of trade here, but when, when we did the last solid waste thing that y'all just looked at for the five-year C I P going forward, part of what we talked about was, was asset depreciation, what we need to do to go forward to maintain those assets, those capital items. And so Trent did get involved there some, Clinton, Johnny, on, uh, upgrades to the transfer station that were needed. Of course, we've replaced the concrete floor in there several times. Uh, most recently, about three years ago, I believe it was, uh, from what I remember. And so, uh, we decided, we all made the decision that that would actually be looked at in year six, which will be in your next look at C I P improvements for solid waste. And that'd be embedded in that solid waste fee and everything for those upgrades.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you all.
Please come again.
You bet. Probably this time.
Thank you. Once again, Samantha, you and your team, give you guys a hand for for winning. for winning the gold certificate for the 22nd year. Tyler Software Agreement, Major Bill Kirkendall.
Good evening, sir.
Hello, sir.
That's been a while. That's actually been a while. Cut me for this group tonight, seeking your approval to proceed into an agreement with Tyler Technologies to provide a records management system for the Liberty County Sheriff's Office. Just a little background, this process has been underway for at least 10 years that I've been involved in it. We have looked, we have scrutinized. I personally have been all over the state looking at records management systems. Our current system is broken, we all know this. Now we have further requirements being placed on the jail as far as annual reporting that we're unable to comply with. We cannot pull those records because our current system will not allow us to. Open records requests go unanswered sometimes or they are significantly delayed because we have trouble pulling the data out. We have, believe it or not, we have personnel in 2025 that have to manually go into each citation that's issued to enter a comma between the last name and first name so the system that we send it off to for the clerk of courts will actually communicate with it properly. So we know we have a problem, and it's been going on for a while now. We are finally in a position where our team, and it is a team effort. You know, Mr. Brown has been, you know, great working with, trying to get this thing off the ground. We've been discussing this for years. We have consulted with the IT department to make sure that our current systems and our hardware, our infrastructure, can handle the new system, and we've been assured that it can. We have a representative here with us tonight from Tyler Tech, Mr. Craig Campbell. Craig has been dealing with us for this entire 10 years. Any other company would have probably walked away by now, but he stuck with us. And this this was not just Liberty County, this was at that point, the city of Heinzville involved as well. So we were all been trying to work towards this goal of getting the software platform. The request that we're asking for tonight, of course, would would involve us using the school zone safety program in order to fund this purchase. I know some people are not in favor of the program. However, this is an $889,000 one-time fee for this program. And of course, there's annual maintenance costs that are that are attached to that. So we are not asking for tax dollars per se. We are asking for permission to use the funds that are already sitting there that we've been able to collect out of the school zones in order to protect our kids in those school zones and slow this traffic problem that we have in Liberty County. If you have any technical questions about the program, Mr. Campbell, he's a lot more versed than I am. And like I said, the IT department has already reviewed this. And of course, Mr. Brown is well aware of the features of this program and its capabilities and where we're at and where we need to be.
Mr. Chairman, okay. I'm looking at the estimated or the cost on the invoice there. I understand the software, the one-time fee for the software, but the Tyler services. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure.
And the estimated travel, what that would include?
Yeah, built into the program, it involves our engineers coming to Liberty County from time to time. Those services are actually not billed until they actually perform the service. So it's kind of amortized over the life of our implementation schedule. Implementation should take anywhere between nine to 12 months to get this program. If we sign the agreement today, we're still looking at between nine to 12 months to get this thing fully implemented, get it off the ground, get our personnel trained and actually start using the software. But that's why, I mean, there are those fees that the company charge us in order to facilitate the install and, of course, the follow-up on the program, make sure everything is working properly.
All right, and then the travel? That's for him, the travel?
Yes, ma'am.
The 95,000 is for travel for the company to come back and forth?
Yes, ma'am.
To train?
Yes.
Our employees?
And there will be a significant learning curve. I mean, this is a, this system is all encompassing. It actually, for the first time in my career, we will have the opportunity to have interoperability between the deputies on the road and the 911 system. They could actually communicate by computer. That's never happened before. Our systems would not cooperate with each other. We've also checked with our other vendors that we have, and this system is compatible with our other vendors. Like I said, we hopefully have checked all the boxes on our research. If we've missed anything, it's definitely an oversight. But we have been dealing with this for a while now, and we feel confident that this is a solution that we need to continue our services.
Joey, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown, this fee would be no different than what we got at the 911 center when they install something for them to come train and service it, right?
It is common across any major software implementation schedule, not only from Tyler, but others. It's exactly what you see from an ADP or anything with an integration standpoint, both of interoperability or data conversion type thing to travel and to training. Yes, sir, absolutely. The other thing I want to say, if I can, is that the efficiencies that this program will allow from the time a traffic stop is made and inputted by the deputy and the log and the file created will follow that case all the way to the court system. Right now, there are so many redundancies and loss of efficiencies that are in there with duplicate input of data. Bill mentioned not being able to retrieve some data. But it's a fully integrated type system from A to Z. And it does, you know, we bought the Tyler packages with these in mind that would come later to be able to make that system fully operable from the time they are booked in to the jail and outbound to the court system. So it's a, it's a complete system. And and we've talked with several communities that have had it and had it up running, and they're very happy with it, very, very happy with it.
You and the chief have, I mean, y'all communicate on this program, the city of Heinzville chief?
Yes, I believe they went with a different records management system because of cost. They didn't have, they didn't have, they couldn't pick out the cost, they couldn't resolve that. So they've chosen to go a different route. Over the years, we've waited on them, you know, they've waited on us from time to time.
Which side were you on?
Well.
Both of them.
Years ago, you know, I'm guilty, you know, I was on the city side, and maybe we were dragging our heels a little bit. And then, of course, in Liberty County, we were getting ready, they wouldn't be ready. And we're at the point now where we can't wait on anybody. Liberty County is growing, you know. Every time we send a deputy on a call, we struggle to even input the data, you know. And these are the issues that we're facing. We can't wait on anybody. We have to, if we have to set the trend, let's set the trend. Let's step out in front of everybody else. Let's get it done.
You said it would take nine months or so to to implement it? So you won't be able to use any part of it until nine months from now, or will you be able to use?
We can use what's working on our existing system. And as the new systems are brought online, we've kind of were resistant to importing any data. Our data right now is corrupted. If we put bad data into a new platform, forget it, it's not going to work right. So we want to start off with a clean slate. So we will still have access to our old data for a time, for a time, you know, a period of time. But the new system, as it comes online, we've got our personnel trained, we are looking between nine and 12 months, hopefully closer to nine.
Okay.
So they'll travel to Heinzville and you, they'll be educated on it out at on your, in your office?
Yes, sir. They will, they will train the trainers. So we will have our dedicated people in house, they will train them. And then we will have individual classes that they will go out into the different divisions and train those folks. So everybody gets the training.
95,000 for travel, you say?
Yes, sir.
That's who?
Estimated.
Over time.
Over.
That's, that's, that's over, that's over this year of implementation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Major, you said that the city of Heinzville went with another company to do something similar?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, and I guess we've been working with Tyler, and that's the one that we identified. So there are other companies that that do this this type work.
Yes, and over the, over the past decade, we have looked at those other companies, we have researched. Like Joey said, I've been all over the state as a, as a team leader for the state certification program. I get to see intimately their documents, what they're producing and how they're able to store data. Those systems that they're using, everyone that has Tyler is leaning towards, it's a very advanced program and it works. And that's all we're asking for. And I feel like the biggest point that we can't stress enough is being able to communicate with our 911 center. You know, if we call out a traffic stop, right now, 911 runs a tag, the deputy runs a tag, put on the report, the jail has to run that data. One time it gets ran, is imported into the report for the deputy. By the time they get to the jail, the rest booking report has written itself. You know, it takes all this redundancy out, and it actually puts in a system that actually works. And believe it or not, we actually would have accessed at some point, if we chose to go this route, to have the true computer-aided dispatch to where there's no voice. You get dispatched by a computer, you acknowledge the call, you arrive on scene, you press another button, you go back and service, you press another button. And and that cuts down on the radio traffic and frees up the radio for emergencies.
Yeah, which, which internal help us with not having to increase staffing overall at 911? Prolong that, the more efficiencies can be built in from that initial stop and initial asking, the less tags we can run and everything, just prolong us having to add additional personnel over there.
I mean, that's good. I hadn't seen Bill in a while. You didn't need to bring a gun.
You never know, want to be careful.
Only, only a thing I mentioned, the other companies we did look at, there were none that would guarantee total interoperability with 911. They would have to do conversions. And in many of the cases that we looked at, those had problems with that interconnectivity in there.
Chair entertain a motion?
Can I say something?
Oh, yeah.
Was one of them ahead of me?
No, no, go ahead.
Major Kirkendall, for the people watching, make sure we understand this. This, what you're wanting to implement here, did I understand it right? Red Schools on funding will pay for this 100%?
Yes, sir, this is not tax dollars.
800 and something?
889,000 for the program.
Don't cost the taxpayer?
No, it won't cost them a penny.
I want them to understand this.
Yes, sir.
It reoccurring fees?
The annual maintenance costs will have to be budgeted. However, that, that's, it doesn't start till after year one, so we're two years away from paying that cost.
Making sure they understand.
Yes, sir, thank you. Chair entertain a motion? Second?
Second.
Motion second, we approve the recommendation from Major Kirkendall for Tyler Technology System. I'll just say system, but keep it generically, okay? Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands? All right.
Thank you, y'all, have a good evening.
The date, it does say 2017. It's been eight years.
Yes, ma'am. It's been a long time.
Just on this proposal, it's been eight years.
I want the price changed.
Oh, definitely. Thank you all, have a good evening.
My friend, we weren't overlooking you, but we had enough information from this gentleman, he did good.
Yeah. You have his gun on him.
Bill. I told you he didn't need a gun.
What's going to be the opportunity for the city to later on, if they decide, hey?
The infrastructure will be in place. It would be a lot easier, should they choose to come over to Tyler, it'd be a lot easier working with Craig, with the company to implement it for the city. Now that we've laid the groundwork, it would definitely be easier if they choose to go that route.
Well, if they choose to go that route, then, you know, we can get 400,000 back from them, right?
No. They have to buy their own system.
There are some implementation costs that we, would, you know, it could have benefited any other agencies that want to join on at the time to help us all get something cheaper.
But who would that be, though? If you say, other than, oh, you mean like Waldenville or?
None opted in, so, you know, so yes, Commissioner Walden, there could be some negotiations about tying in our system and the upfront cost.
That sounds good.
Fire will not be tied in with it?
Yes, yes, it will.
Not, not initially.
Okay. So that's something that probably needs to be looked at.
Well, fire has, I mean, I say fire has their own system, but their reporting package is another different package. And it automatically loads to those packages over there, but it is not a Tyler-based product, right? There's a statewide fire reporting system, NIFERS, that is out there for those fire agencies, and that's what they use.
Can y'all talk to the firemen?
Yes.
Yes, we can, via radio, yes. Sure can.
You have to talk.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
We're going to be counting a dollar, Bill.
Yes, sir. We are too, trying to be good stewards.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate the work with that. Chief, good to see you. Board appointments?
We're not ready, Mr. Chairman. I know y'all joking. I know y'all.
That's who is chair that one.
I know y'all joking. I can't, I can't, I can't. I just want to say I quit the head.
You gonna, you gonna demote them?
Mr. Chair.
After a year of watching. Oh, man.
Public Health Board.
Mr. Chair, we confronted each other for the cultural and historical resource.
You gonna do that one first?
Right, that's, that's how it's.
Okay, all right, okay, we can flow.
Mr. Jimmy Ingram Jr. for the historical, cultural and historical resource.
I make a motion, we approve Mr. Inman.
She's going to second, we approve Jimmy Ingram Jr., is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Mr. Ingram is appointed to the Culture and Historic Resources Committee, hope he'll serve well. Next in your packet?
Next in the packet is Git.
Git Committee?
That one is Mr. Ms. Dana Ingram.
Chairman, I make a motion, appoint Ms. Inman to the.
Ingram.
Ingram, excuse me, to the.
Is there a second?
I second it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion second, we have Ms. Dana Ingram, I think she works with.
JC.
JC Vision, yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Ms. Ingram is appointed, hope she will serve well. Public Health Board.
Public Health, Mr. Chairman, we made an agreement to come down and appoint Ms. Jelonda Green.
Yes, sir, I make the motion that we approve Ms. Jelonda Green to the Public Health Board.
Second.
Motion second, we have Ms. Jelonda Green, I know she's from the Sunbury area, when she was in high school. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Good to have a young, a young lady from the local community being involved.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just, I was looking at the Culture and Historic Resource Committee. Would that be someone like whenever Mr. Howard across the street with the city scheduled a meeting in Ohio? So would that be someone that would, you know, probably have some interest in what we're trying to do over there whenever we meet again? I know Phil, is this the same committee that Phil?
Phil, yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, Phil shares that.
Well, Phil, Phil is invited to the meeting, so that'd be fine. He's the chairman.
He's the chairman.
How about that? Do you know how many people on that committee?
At least, at least.
I think we've been looking for one more person, at least, over a year.
Yeah.
I believe.
Yeah.
Commissioner.
What's the man's name that does the insurance? Is he still on it?
Randy, I don't know, I think Randy wasn't on that, Randy Branch.
He's on the nothing.
Randy is off. Randy, oh, Branch.
Branch, no. Phil was on there, but not Randy. Yeah.
Phil's off?
Phil was on there. He's on there. Phil chairs it.
Okay, yeah, that's, I just want to.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah, same committee.
Okay.
Same committee. Thank you, committee.
All right. Congratulations.
Resolution for acceptable forms of payments for ad valorem tax. Mr. Brown, you presenting?
Yes, sir, I will, on behalf of the Tax Commissioner. There are several things that incoming tax commissioners like to have renewed. One of those that's been recommended is a resolution just authorizing the forms of payment that can be accepted down there. So he has asked that we do that. And it's basically, you see them listed there for what's recommended, but it's basically what was done before and what's going on now and is basically any way you want to pay that, that we're assured of getting to pay.
So years ago, we did that for Commissioner Jones.
You did, yes, sir.
Wow, okay, all right. Chair entertain a motion, then.
I'm moving, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, we approve the acceptable forms of payment for ad valorem taxes as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. All right, motion passes. Administrative reports, Mr. Mosley.
Chairman, members of the board, couple items in regards to our youth programs, our summer youth employment program. The application has been revised and placed online. The due date is on March 28 with interviews scheduled for April the 12th from 8:30 to 12:00 PM here. And the program will run in conjunctions with the city of Heinzville and Riceburg, which will be from June the 2nd to July the 3rd.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Mosley and the department head meeting on Tuesday, there was some talk about the summer youth program. And I think the HR department for the city, I think they, there was a concern that Mr. Howard brought up that I think we kind of want Riceburg, the city and the county to kind of work together. But I think the deadline, you know, if you're working together, kind of have like one big program or comprehensive. But it looked like, I think the deadline for the county and the deadline for the city and even the deadline for Riceburg may not have been the same. I think.
No, sir.
You know, I think they're going to start the same.
It will start the same, but different timeframes.
Why is that if you all working together? Why would you have a different deadline for one as opposed to the other?
During our process, we pretty much have stayed in line where in the last couple of years. And I did talk to Ryan and Mr. Arnold and the mayor, but Riceburg already had set theirs already in place in terms of how they were going to do things. So they were already, there were a full run of us. And I think Heinzville was still talking about it at the time, but we had those discussions in terms of when they were going to do their interviewing.
Yeah, you know, I think it's good that, you know, that they would try to work together, the three governmental entities. But it just seemed like if you're going to do that, that it just seems to me that if you, if you put out the applications or you're going to start the program to start, and the deadline should be the same if it's just about. But that's what was discussed, I don't know.
That's something that we can shoot for next year to definitely try to make sure everything's coordinated all the way down to maybe having the interviewing in the same spot, same timeframe.
I think right now, if I'm not y'all correct, there's a few things you all are doing collectively, but it's still three separately run programs.
But you're right, Commissioner Gillis, the goal is to, one day, have it one comprehensive program. Yes, sir. But that's something we can do. And one of the things that we did talk about when I met with Mr. Arnold and Mayor Stacey is there's a desire to have like a youth summit to culminate that last days of the program. So we bring up as many youth as we can to possible and have workshops and things to encourage youth. So that's one of the things that we are trying to do for the last day. On yesterday, Commissioner Frazier and 19 students from Liberty County into Cindy Heinzville, which was the first time we ever collaborated, went to the Capitol, met with State Representative Al Williams, and also met with the Fulton County Youth Commission. And I believe they had some lively discussions and lobbying to some of the legislatures to raise the minimum age that students can drop out of school. So I think they had some very positive discussion there. And one of the things we will be doing is arranging for them to come and make a presentation of what they've learned thus far this year with the youth commission. And general business, County Attorney Keller Davis, along with Chairman Lovett, Commissioner Stevens, myself, County Manager Joey Brown, and Chief and Deputy Chief Met with the Midway City Council and presented the IGA for Fire Services. And Mr. Davis answered questions. We will, there was no decision at the time, but we'll be attending a work session this coming Monday, February 24th at 6:00 p.m. at City of Midway. County staff has been meeting with and talking to a number of vendors for our payroll and human resource functions. One of the things that they wanted, they have a desire to do is replace our current, county's current ADP software because of a number of issues we're having, it doesn't interface with other software. They have horrible customer service and it doesn't handle the code, so they have to do a lot of manual manipulation, which is inefficiency. So they want to be, they're looking at some software and from what we're looking at now, the cost will be a lot cheaper than ADP. So that's something they're working on. And also.
So that'd be a special asset, that'd be in their CIP? Not that far along yet.
They're at the point now, sir, where they'd like to present it. It will be, the implementation will be able to get some money from ARPA for the implementation to utilize that. And then it will be a part of the regular, we have been using monies from ARPA to basically pay for it over the last three years that we've had ADP. So it will have to be probably included in the budget this year.
Okay.
Since ARPA funds are going away.
Yes.
Also, you have on your desk a, just some ideas that we've been talking about for our planning retreat. We're going to ask you to please, ma'am, please, sir, send us your ideas that we can put on the planning retreat. And again, we've got those dates scheduled for Wednesday, March the 19th, 2025, and Thursday, March the 20th, 2025, from 8:30 to 1:00 p.m. at the Midcoast Regional Airport.
Both days would be to 1:00 p.m.?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I conclude my report, Mr. Chair.
Hey, Ms. Mosley, you were saying that there were some discussions up in Atlanta about raising the age to drop out of school?
Yes, sir.
Maybe they should discuss taking a test to see if you could drop out. I mean, that seemed like, you know, if you pass the test, then you could drop out. That mean, that mean you read it.
It's funny, funny you say that about Mr. Brown's coming. And I'm on Savannah Tech, boy, there's a new program out that's funded by the state where if a person drops out in, you know, let's say 11th grade, and then two years later decides, you know, I need my diploma, the state now has a special program to allow that person to come back, enroll in Savannah Tech, get your high school diploma, and take a trade.
They used to have that thing, if you get out of school, you went to ARMY.
Just a couple of quick updates for you, thank you. The shop, they started moving into the new maintenance shop this week, as a matter of fact. So they're getting seated in there and still wrapping up a few things. Wanted you to, if you could, just maybe pencil in on your schedule for potential ribbon cutting for the 28th, March 28th. That's a little while off, but that'll give them time to get in there. And we've got some landscaping things we need to get into place there. And we'll confirm that date with you. I do want to see how the move goes this week, tomorrow, and see. So I'll get with you on your calendars to make sure that works good, to see about that. Health Department come along very well, you can see that. The sign is down up front because they had to do some work around the water main, and they'll be putting that back.
It's been up a good while, so I'm glad.
Yes, sir. Brick is on order, that selection was made. And so that was a critical path item, and we worked through some tie-in water issues today for the site with the city water system that has been great. So that, subsurface plumbing, about done this week. You can kind of see the footers that are going in there, the brick footers along that. And then the electrical stop, or start subsurface work on the electrical components in the coming two weeks. So we meet about every two weeks, which is great. So it's doing good. The other thing we'll be doing in short order is looking at access to the back of that site. Because as you recall, we're going to be trying to relocate Brenda in the recycling operation of the old hospital site that's left. They'll go in the back of that portion, and they'll access that, not through the health department site, but through the back maintenance yard. So a little bit of work to do there, which won't be bad because some of that old fence will get replaced at the wreck as part of that process. We had the pre-construction conference today on the new EMS, administrative building and training building over there off of South Main Street, that went very well. And so they granted us permission to go ahead and get started on that. Materials and things have already been, had started to be ordered to get ahead of that shipment schedule. But this was a mandatory requirement from the city that we meet with them and LCPC to get stuff going there. So that's off and running. Again, that's probably a 12-month process. We're pegging it nine, but it's probably.
You said mandatory requirement, that's part of their regular?
It is, part of the regular meetings that are had. You know, we do a pre-con year, we do two with the city, one with LCPC, and one with the city. City joins on George Smith, and those are very good to work with there. Last thing I have, subject, any questions before executive session is that, and I think I copied, Commissioner Stevens copied, you may have copied everybody on it. But I did have contact this week through email with some new folks at International Paper. And so did relay to them the desire to see that road improvement done and wanted to know of their austerity, anything they might want to do, participate. And they were going to kick that up the line. They do have, obviously, as they came in and bought that plant, some already a three-to-five-year improvement process that they wanted to do with money investment, but said they would take a look at it to see if there's anything they could do to try to help out. So I just sent that end of last week. I wanted to give them a couple of weeks before I reached back out and pushed the button again and kind of push that along for an answer. So have been able to reach out to them.
Yes, Senator George, on that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I had one question. I was back there the other day. The old Boy Scout hut behind, I think the barricades there used to be troop field. Is that, they still have Boy Scout meetings and stuff back there?
They do, yes, sir. We had to work.
The reason I asked, I was wondering, you know, maybe we could, if they were not using that, maybe we could get another field or something over there.
They have a lease, they got a lease with Liberty Independent Troop Corporation, like we do for that. Danny Peller oversees that. You may remember Danny. I know that Commissioner Walden probably does. But we worked with them to get an easement on that for stormwater detention as part of the health project and confirmed they do still have an active program.
It's a drainage pond adjacent to that down by Regency. And I guess all that kind of ties in there. It used to be the pond at the Boy Scout thing used to have an island in the center, if you remember that. But it's, that pond is still back there for the Boy Scout hut.
It is, it is. And as part of this, as part of the Health Department project, what they were enthused about is some of the turbidity that's going to come from the stormwater is going to stir that algae, help get that out of there. We're putting a spillway in the back, enhancing that spillway that'll tip over into that depressed area by Regency. And we'll actually do a little bit of expansion area around Regency to help that stormwater detention too, so very, very good.
Can we look at these, this extra dump down there on, I don't know if it's Sandy Run or right there by the old Enmark? Where they come in there and they separate their bottles along their couches. I mean, that needs to be.
Rellocated.
We need to take it, take it down and move it?
Yeah.
Or get a new one to go somewhere, but that needs to, that's. I came by Commissioner Thrift's out there and it looked to me like four or five houses had cleaned out over the weekend. There was couches, chairs.
They just find that every once in a while.
Yep, that's been a consistent problem since day one. They got worse over the last probably eight years. And we're consistently have to bring the knuckle boom in there to clean that stuff up. And if we can find evidence of who it is and we cite them for an ordinance violation. But the old recycling things that were there are the originals. They've been patched and molded. They don't make them anymore. Clinton, the last time we talked, thought he had located somebody that maybe could make some new ones for us. But I agree, I mean, I guess, you know, it's probably time to see if that needs to go away. I hate to say that, but probably go away.
Get it done.
Okay. I'll get back, we can bring you some back on that. Yeah, so I mean, there's really no other place to locate. It would really just go away. And we just have a couple of things, one for legal matter and one for personnel, please.
Make a motion, we go.
All in favor?
Second session back in the regular session.
Sure.
Second, all in favor show over here. She had ten motion to adjourn, nothing to report.
I'm on my way to the desk.
Second, all in favor.
All right.
Right now.
Oh.